Good afternoon. It's now five thirty. I'd like to call the Calhoun County Council's November twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting to order. Would you give us an invitation, please, ma'am?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, please preside over this meeting. Help us listen politely and work together for a good outcome for Calhoun County. Amen.
Amen. Motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All your favor. Aye.
Aye.
Foes as likewise the ayes have it. John, do you have any public comments?
We do. We've got one, Mr. Jeff Price.
Thank y'all for allowing me a couple minutes to speak. As a fire coordinator for Calhoun County Fire Commission, it has come to our attention that Castle is looking to combine all PAL eight hundred radio accounts into one account, with one person being in charge of the set account. In brief conversations with several commission members, we, the Calhoun County Fire Commission, have several concerns with this idea. We feel there needs to be discussion held with all involved that currently have their own PAL eight hundred radio accounts. This includes the Sheriff's Office EMS, Calhoun County Rural Fire District, Sandy Run Fire District, and the EOC. Each entity is going to have to have at least one person to be able to have authorization to access the radios assigned to their account. They will need to be able to activate, deactivate radios as needed. They had new radios to the account and request new radio IDs from PAL eight hundred. Currently, the Calhoun County Fire District has a hundred and sixty-nine radios assigned to their accounts. All are active and either in trucks or in the most active firefighter's hands. Not every volunteer has a radio. And no Calhoun County Rural Fire District firefighter has been assigned more than one radio. Of these radios, one each is assigned to the coroner, Public Works, Water Department Administrator, and Deputy Administrator. Before y'all get too far along on establishing ordinance concerning this, let all involved please sit down and discuss this so we all have the understanding as to what can be done to make sure all departments have what they need as well as saving the county money. We're not saying we will not work with this, but let's have some discussions before we get too far along in it. That's all I've got. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else, any more public comments?
No, sir.
No more public comments. Have approval of the October twentieth, twenty twenty four regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion or corrections? All your favor. Aye.
Aye.
Foes as likewise the ayes have it. Under appearances, we have the First Circuit Public Defender, Mr. William, Pelletian in Judicial Matters.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, my name is Pierce William. I am the First Circuit Public Defender. I was installed as the First Circuit Public Defender back in March of twenty twenty four. I took over from Mark Line Decker. But I held that position since it was implemented, and they went to a circuit system with regards to indigent defense. The First Circuit is Dorchester, Orangeburg, and Calhoun County, and we are the largest criminal defense firm in the First Circuit. My plan upon taking over this job, one, was to learn primarily Orangeburg and Calhoun Counties, and their needs, what they were doing, what could be improved upon, and what was working. My entire experience has been in Dorchester County. I served ten years as a public defender in Dorchester County as assistant public defender, working my way up until I was elected to be the certainly a public defender. And what became clear when looking at the needs of Calhoun County was that a full-time public defender needed to be dedicated to Calhoun County. And I will say this, I understand that as publicly elected officials, public defense, indigent defense is not a particularly popular topic when it comes to funding with your constituents. What I can say, since I started this job and I've started to dig into numbers, is that case management, effective case management, and efficient case management does come into play when it comes to dollars and cents, specifically when it comes to our incarcerated population in the detention centers in the First Circuit. And so what I looked at when looking at the numbers was, one, that Calhoun County by far in our circuit was behind with regards to cases that had expired or had exceeded three years of age or more. That is a benchmark that's been set by the Supreme Court when it comes to extremely old cases that need to be moved. The circuit-wide average was four percent. Calhoun County was running at eleven percent, over three years or older. What this does is it delays justice for the system. It delays justice for victims. It also delays justice for defendants. And so the plan that we wanted to put in place would be one that would cut down on these old case numbers, move cases quicker, hopefully save Calhoun County and their taxpayers some money. What we've done, as I said, we installed a full-time public defender. I brought my most experienced public defender that I had in our Dorchester office. He's now splitting time between Calhoun County and Dorchester County. He takes an equal caseload in both counties. And in fact, because of the lower caseload here, he has more time to dedicate to Calhoun. He is here for preliminary hearings in Sandy Run. He is here for General Sessions Court, which they are running this week in Calhoun County. And what he has been able to do is to drop our percentage from eleven percent to four percent. And I will say that that percentage is even better currently than the Orangeburg County General Sessions, three years or older rate, which is the first time, I think, that I can ever think of that has been that way, that these old cases are moving. What we've also tried to do is to eliminate cases a year or older from our docket, specifically public defender cases. And what I can report to County Council is that currently, we are sitting at about twenty-seven percent of cases that are a year or older belong to the First Circuit Public Defender. Typically, this is a flip or an inverse of what you normally see, which is a large percent of the docket, sixty-six to seventy percent are usually public defender cases. We are running twenty-seven percent in Calhoun, which what I believe means is that the focus and dedication of a full-time employee, and this is not to take anything away from his predecessor in Calhoun, which was Mitch Farley, who was running on a contract. That's nothing to take away from him, but what it has done is it's designated somebody whose sole focus is indigent defense in this county versus someone who's trying to run a practice and also manage his time here. If court pops up on short notice, he's here, and we have certainly made every attempt to make his availability as universal as possible. What I've also tried to do is meet with our other departments here. We have a juvenile department, and we have a summary court department, both of which are contract positions. Derek Felder is our current juvenile public defender, and Thomas Sims runs our summary court contract. And what I needed to do was figure out their needs, what they saw in their docket size, and what they predict and project into the future. And the resounding and consistent theme between the two of them is that they are managing now, but they are worried about the future. Both of them are private practitioners. The Felder firm is a pretty prominent firm in Calhoun County. Mr. Sims splits time in Calhoun and Orangeburg, does a lot of work. They're both experienced, able to run departments by themselves, and are able to keep these dockets moving efficiently. The juveniles docket specifically is of great importance when we're dealing with children. We're dealing with trying to get these cases moved quickly, just based on the age of these defendants. And what I'm concerned about is moving forward into the future, whether or not the increasing demands and needs of indigent defense within the state, as we see more and more people with mental health issues being pushed onto the criminal defense, the criminal justice system. You know, cases that otherwise would have been resolved in other matters are now being shoved into our world, and our resources are limited, and our lack of expertise is obvious and prevalent. These cases hog up time. They drag. They delay. And having experienced practitioners involved for Calhoun, when I'm having one practitioner in each department, it is paramount. An inexperienced, younger lawyer who might be cheaper cannot do what they can do. And I'm worried that if we lose them, that the gains that we have made will fall off. By the end of the year, I hope to see and to be able to show dramatic improvements in all three categories. I can say that with the work of Judge Teague Taylor, our circuit court judge, we have implemented and installed a new term of court. We get four a year. We have four weeks a year in Calhoun County. Most counties run two weeks a month. We have four weeks a year. Judge Taylor has helped us to get a month designated and dedicated to old cases in December. My hope is that when I report back to you in January, you'll be able to see an even further decrease in the overall docket, not just the old docket. And this work and this plan that I have will have real, real impact for you, not just in docket size, which is a great number to be able to tell you, but also in dollars and cents. My hope is that the incarcerated population will be increasingly lower, and that we will be able to show that investment into the public defender's office is not just something that I would be coming to you and saying that this is equitable and that the solicitors have this and we need that, but they can also provide to your constituents money for projects that I'm sure they can all get behind. I'm certainly available with any questions you might have. I could go into the needs of the public defender's office, what we do if you would like to. I certainly will provide you with my card after this, and you can reach out to me with any questions or concerns. I try to be in Orangeburg County, my office there, installed an office there. There was not a First Circuit Public Defender, Circuit Public Defender's Office until just recently. I'm up here at least once a week, so I'm also available to come and meet with anyone who has any questions about what we do or how we do.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. William?
I don't have any right now.
As I said, I plan to be back in January. Hope that you'll have me for another report to show you what we've done in twenty twenty four.
Just before you sit down, I have one observation. How much, how much funds are we talking about? I mean, that's, that's the key. Anytime you talk about something like that, it's gonna be how much more money this county has to come up with through, that's what it's.
Well.
To fund those.
Yes, Chairman, I understand. And I will tell you what I've told Orangeburg and what I've told Dorchester, which is, I'm not a, I'm not an excuse person. I will take whatever I'm given, whether I get the salmon on I got last year, and I'm gonna turn it into as much of a help foot as I can for Calhoun County. And I think we have done that. What I can tell you is that currently, I believe, our contracts are for twenty-one thousand dollars apiece for Mr. Felder and Mr. Sims. And I believe we are dedicating forty thousand dollars of Calhoun money for Mr. Chisholm. What I can also tell you is that Mr. Chisholm's salary is largely carried by Dorchester County. And certainly, that's a, a situation I would like to be made more equitable over time, because what it will do is it'll create more money in Calhoun to hopefully keep Mr. Felder and Mr. Sims in the fold. I will have a full detailed request for you in January. I'm certainly aware of budgetary constraints. I'm aware of our, like I said, the lack of enthusiasm with your constituents with regards to funding public defenders offices. But I'm also hopeful that in January, I can show you, per person, per day, how much an investment in the public defender's office could actually save your constituents as well. You know, I would, with a fifty thousand dollar budget, I think is what we have from Calhoun County, you know, even a small increase would go a long way in helping, over time, provide to keep these people in place.
Anyone else? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah. Come on, come on, Jeff. That's all right. Come on, Jeff. I'm not gonna buck the judge. Come on, come on, Jeff.
I didn't want to keep you late. I'm gonna kind of drop it. For those who don't know me, I'm Jeff Blum. I'm the Chief Magistrate for Calhoun County, and I am an attorney. I'm gonna follow up on what Mr. Wayman talked about. I won't be long, but I want to tell you why it's a public safety issue that Calhoun County begin to think about in this next budget cycle, what it might be able to contribute to the public defender office, and, I dare say, the solicitor's office. Now, I've not talked to Solicitor Pasco. He may be here next week, or the phones may blow up, and he may say, I'm not asking for any money. But here's the issue. It's a public safety issue. It's not about money. Nobody wants to give money to criminals and defendants in jails and all of that. I get that. I was a public defender for fourteen years. You have not had a solicitor who dedicated her full time to this county. Since my wife was the assistant solicitor, before we were married, she used to kick my tail in court. That's why I figured I had to start dating her, because then she couldn't prosecute the cases I had. Karen Fryer, now Karen Fryer Blum, worked as your assistant solicitor in the early two thousands. She was part-time, but she was here three, four, sometimes five days a week, and before a term of court, the whole two weeks before. It's a public safety issue, Mr. Chairman and Counsel, because we have cases on that docket that are from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And after a while, witnesses' memories fade, witnesses move. And as a former defense lawyer, I can tell you, Solicitor, I'm gonna pick a jury. Your witnesses are now in Ohio. Are you really gonna bring them back? Or they're, you know, you haven't been able to find them for six months. So it's a public safety issue. You can ask Matt Trenton, Chief Deputy back there, the problem the Sheriff's Office has in magistrate court, because no solicitor comes to prosecute their cases. Mr. Pasco makes it to me on TV, but you know, since I hit my sixties, I kind of talk plainly. I don't cuss. I try not to be rude, but, Mr. Chairman, I speak my mind. And there should be a solicitor, once a month, sitting on the opposite aisle of the public defender in preliminary hearings. A preliminary hearing is where defendant in jail or on bond comes back to magistrate court, and Judge Teague holds him once a month, and the sheriff's deputy has to testify that there's sufficient evidence for the case to go forward. Deputies aren't lawyers. That public defender gets up and objects, or makes a motion that something's not proper. Judge Teague is required to dismiss that case. And there was a domestic violence first-degree case that got dismissed recently because there was no solicitor on the other side of that courtroom in a prelim to argue not to have that happen. Now, the solicitor, to his credit, and I think Ryan Templeton, the assistant solicitor of Calhoun, is a smart guy. He's an experienced guy, and he's an excellent prosecutor, but he's part-time, so he doesn't come to preliminary hearings. That victim went several months between the dismissal of the domestic violence first degree, and she's a Calhoun resident. She's a voter. I'll tell you that. I'm not gonna name her. Till the solicitor was able to convene the grand jury during their regular schedule and directly indict him. That bypasses the prelim process. I'm not gonna get into procedures too deeply. But now that defendant is summoned back to court, he has to be back on bond. There's conditions, but for several months, his bond, his case was gone. He could have contacted that victim, harassed her, stalked her. We don't know. So it's a public safety issue that this council needs to begin considering and looking at. And it may be you form a subcommittee on judicial processes. That's beyond me. But, but we don't have a solicitor that comes to prelims. We don't have a solicitor that comes to bench trials or jury trials. When a defendant stands up in magistrate court and says, I want to plead not guilty, they have to prosecute their own case. There's no solicitor that comes here and prosecutes those. My wife used to, even though she was part-time, because she felt that was her ethical and judicial obligation. But you have no prosecutor on the other side of the aisle from his lawyer. And it's just not fair, and it's, it's a public safety issue, Mr. Chairman and, and Counsel, because those deputies aren't lawyers. They don't know the rules of evidence. They don't know how to object to evidence. They don't know how to respond when a good attorney objects to evidence. And while magistrate court is little court, they're thirty-day offenses. There was a recent case, assault and battery third degree, where a gentleman was accused of beating up his girlfriend in a parking lot. It was filmed on, on the Sandy Run BP station, but that evidence wasn't admissible for procedural reasons, but there was no solicitor argue about that. So that defendant was not convicted, and rightly so, under the rules of evidence and the burden of proof of assault and battery third degree on his girlfriend. So in my humble view, Calhoun County needs to begin seriously looking at what it might afford, do it in stages, begin at this budget cycle, of what it might contribute to the public defender's office, because they dedicate a full-time attorney to magistrate court and a full-time attorney, well, part-time, excuse me, but an attorney who handles all magistrate court cases and in family court, Mr. Felder. Mr. Sims handles all the cases in magistrate court. If I get a defendant in, in our court who stands up and says, Judge, I need a lawyer, and I can't afford one, I'm required, under state law, state constitution, U.S. Constitution, to appoint him an attorney. I go through financial information to make sure they're not scamming the system, but I have to appoint an attorney. But there's no prosecutor on the other side for those cases. The last thing I'll tell you is this. This is where magistrate court might help. We have authority under the statute for people who get appointed to Mr. Sims, the contract public defender in our court, to assess them a fee, and we routinely do it. Sometimes it's a hundred dollars. Sometimes it's five hundred dollars. Sometimes it's more. It's a sliding scale. I learned just this past spring that we don't, we used to have to send all that money to Columbia, to the, to the public defender office, indigent defense in Columbia. I've learned through a change of law, we get to hold that, and we get to give that back to our county. So I'm sitting on about two thousand dollars right now. It's not much, but it's a start. So I'm waiting to send that money to Calhoun County, dedicated to a public defender line item in the budget, or a solicitor line item in the budget. It's, it's, it's money that you can use for your judicial system. So in my humble view, again, I come back to it, it's a public safety issue. It's time for Calhoun County to have a solicitor helping those officers who aren't lawyers prosecute the cases they need to. We had a jury trial recently. We used the big courtroom so people can spread out. The officer had to prosecute his own case. There's no solicitor on the other side, and, and it ain't right. It just ain't right, you know? So it's not about helping criminals. Nobody wants to do that. It really is a public safety issue. And I'm glad to, to provide more details or information as, as counsel looks at this issue over the long term. But I urge you to consider, in this budget cycle, seeing what, what you can do. Baby steps. That's all we need to do. Baby steps. I don't think we need to, you know, suddenly dedicate a hundred thousand dollars to it, but I think we need to start taking baby steps because the citizens of this county are disadvantaged by the way things work now, whether it's in magistrate court or general sessions court. I want to end on this note. We have collected and turned over to the county, collectively, the measure of course, just in the last four months, about fifty thousand dollars. Approximately twenty-one thousand of that the county keeps. That has nothing to do with this issue. I just want to, again, remind counsel that while we're not a collection agency, we don't set out to, you know, make people pay for, into the general fund of the county. We just collect money for traffic tickets, court filing fees, those sorts of things. So we are one of the few offices that, that help contribute to, to the budget and so forth in the county. That's not to say we, we, you know, sit there and say, oh, we need to charge this person so it goes to the county. We're all about, if people can't pay a fine, they go on litter patrol. And Judge Teague has already passed five hundred hours just for this bunch of years, getting people to pick up trash in the county. So there's all sorts of ways for us to skin that cat and help the county. I'm glad to answer any questions, and, and I really appreciate you letting me appear with Mr. Wayman and emphasize this. And if Solicitor Pasco wants to come, I'd be glad to appear with him and say the same thing I've said tonight. I won't repeat it and say it again. I'll just come back and say, remember what I said. Public safety. And I think someone ought to ask Solicitor Pasco why he doesn't have a solicitor in magistrate court on some of these important cases. I just, I'd like the answer to that. So thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments?
It's always a delight to be here in front of you.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I'm ready to swear on anybody who got elected.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Christopher Green, the Regional Director, eighteen ninety program at South Carolina State University.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hello. Just wanted to switch gears just a little bit. As the chair said, my name is Christopher Green. Serve as the Regional Director for the Midland's Region for South Carolina State eighteen ninety research and extension. And I have my colleague, Dr. Thomas Nieto. And we just want to present just a couple of things to the county, some of the stuff that we're working on for our counties. Currently, I serve four counties. I serve Bamber, Orangeburg, Calhoun, and Bamba counties. And with those counties, we cover five different service areas. The first part, we do sustainable agriculture, natural resources. That's where we work with farmers. With Dr. Nieto, we do the forestry. And then we do forty youth development. We work with the schools and the youth in the community. We do family nutrition and health, community economic development, as well as SNAP education. And Calhoun County is one of the counties that we service with SNAP education. So the purpose of me coming over tonight is to present a couple of things that we're hosting for Calhoun County and for our youth, as well as our community. Number one, we are hosting a summer camp program, which we did this past summer. It was hosted at the St. Matthews K.A. We had about twenty-seven youth that participated in the summer camp. We had a full curriculum. And then after that last day, we were able to bus those young people and send them to South Carolina State University for a college tour. And then we also fed those youth. And then, so this year, twenty twenty-five, we're looking to host summer camp again here at Calhoun County. And one of the things I want to do is see if we can find a location to house our summer camp program. We're looking to host about forty youth this year to do different types of summer enrichment activities, as well as a field trip at Inova, summer camp, and that camp is gonna end. It's only one week, and it starts June, June sixteenth to June twentieth of twenty twenty-five. The last day of June twentieth, we will do some type of enrichment trip, where we'll take students to maybe a college tour or to some educational museum. And then also, we have another camp, which is called Achieve Camp. And this Achieve Camp is where we look into hosting about a hundred and twenty-five youth from Calhoun County. We want to bus these young people and want to bring them over to South Carolina State University. And we have a full week of events from STEM to AI, so those young people can get an opportunity to learn a lot of different things with STEM and AI. And we're looking at doing that camp June twenty-third to June twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five. And so we are reaching out to the school district, meeting with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and some of the school officials to introduce our summer camp program as well. So everyone in Calhoun County will know that South Carolina State eighteen ninety is here to provide services to our community. And one of the things we want to do is make sure that our youth is safe, our youth have fun, they learn, and then also make sure our community is safe. And then also our community get a lot of great things, from healthy living, healthy lifestyle, healthy eating, to business development and how to create a small business, also how to work and create a nonprofit. And that's one of the things we want to do for Calhoun County. So with that said, I do want to bring my colleague up, Dr. Nieto, and I want him to present on the forestry part.
Good evening. As you've heard, my name's Dr. Thomas Nieto, and I am really grateful for the support we've been receiving from Calhoun County. Miss Jenkins attended the meeting we had when we were rolling out the forest service, funded a program of tree planting in cities. Basically, so Calhoun, the first phase is we are doing three counties, so Calhoun, Orangeburg, and Bamba. And then later on, in the third year, we'll add more counties to a total of ten counties. So basically, it's trees. How do I say it normally? Normally, I say it when you go, say, in a city, and you want to pack your vehicle, you always look to where there's a shed, to pack your car under the shed, especially in the summer, because when you come back, the car is still cool. So in this project, the Forest Service funded South Carolina State University to plant trees in, in different counties and towns. And in this, we'll have, you know, fruit trees, our regular trees, our liveos, you know, the trees which will give us shade in the cities. But the other very good part of this is... But the other very good part of this is part of workman, eh, workman development for, for kids. High school kids will be involved in this and that's where the county comes in. Where the funds will come from Forest Service, South Carolina State University, and then to the county. And then the kids in the local schools, you know, maybe weekend, they get jobs and, you know, they, they, they help in planting the trees. And then we're looking at over the next, uh, four years in this county to plant at least five thousand eight hundred trees. And then the other, same goes to Bamba and the same goes to Orangeburg. And in the other counties, we'll be, you know, fewer trees. But we are really excited about this project and as this roll on, we will count, you know, we'll have this. Any questions?
Anyone get a question?
All right, is, is this, uh, is there any cost to the children, to the students for this or?
They will, they will be paid, yes.
They will pay to come to the camp?
We, oh, this is for the common.
So the camp, um, for the explorers camp, which is one week, it is twenty-five dollars per youth. Um, and that twenty-five dollars cover the meals, activities, as well as the enrichment trip. Uh, and then we also have one that's gonna be at the, uh, the Achieve Camp and I think that costs us fifty dollars. And that camp is, that cost is gonna cover again meals, transportation, um, and then other activities that those kids will be doing, uh, at, on campus at SC State.
And maybe tell them about their length, how, how long are they?
So each camp is one week long.
Okay.
For the Achieve Camp is one week because we're working with four other counties to bring youth there. Um, and then also for the explorers camp, it is also one week and we're looking to bring, uh, bring the camp here at Calhoun County.
So in other words, the camp will include people from other counties in?
No, so.
So there'll be separate count?
Right, every separate counties. The goal for me is to have, uh, a camp in Avery County, um, Calhoun County, Orangeburg County, Bamber, and Bamba County. And so we're looking to target forty youth for Calhoun County only to do camp here.
Okay.
Yes.
What age group is that?
Um, so the age group for the explorers camp is, um, eight to eleven. And, uh, we have the Achieve Camp and that camp will be, um, I believe from nine to thirteen.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would like to mention that, uh, we have a nonprofit here called Calhoun County Cares. I happen to be chairman of the board.
Sure.
And if you would like to put in a, we take, um, written requests for funds particularly to support individual, individual kids and stuff at camps. So if you want to, if you want to get that information, uh, Calhoun County Cares is the name of the organization. So, eh, you know, for any, anybody who's not able to pay, or maybe we could fund a certain number of slots.
Absolutely. And also, um, I do have a summer camp, uh, pre-registration form. So this is for any person who have children who want to register their kids for summer camp. What we're doing is just doing like a list served now. And so when we start our summer camp, we can reach out to these young people to let them know about camp and when the camp is gonna be started, location and all of this stuff. So if you'd like, I'm definitely love to share this with as many of you as possible.
Is the camp an overnight stay?
No, sir. The, uh, explorers camp is a day camp.
Day camp.
The Achieve Camp is a day camp. Now, we do have another camp which is called Four H Residential Camp. That camp is gonna be at Camp Bob Cooper and that is a, uh, overnight camp. And that camp again is one week and that's gonna be over the summer as well. Um, and we're targeting, this camp is gonna be from all four counties, uh, and so I will be targeting, um, youth from all counties. Uh, and for that camp, it's forty-three youth for that camp. Uh, and again, all expenses paid for in terms of meals and activities, we just have a certain fee for those young people to pay to attend. And, um, again, if you would like a flyer, the QR code is here. If you could just scan the QR code and pre-register for our summer camp, uh, we definitely take all registration as possible.
I would like to get one of those before you leave.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Green?
I, I'd just like to make a comment. You don't need to get back up, but thank you for what state's doing at Camp Harry Daniels, right? So that's in Calhoun County and I know you're adding a lot of investment in amenities down there. Probably so much that you don't want camp kids down there anymore, right?
No, actually, actually, we're, uh, renovating Camp Harry Daniels too to host our own camp there versus taking those students to Camp Bob Cooper.
Okay, good.
So within the next few years, um, Camp Harry Daniels will be ready to move.
Yeah, and counsel, if you had, if you're ever down that way, swing through there because it's impressive what all they've built with the housing and the conference center and all the amenities down there, for sure.
I was down there for an opening of the conference center. It's really nice, yeah.
Nick? Okay, anybody else? Okay, I thank you, Mr. Green, for what you're all doing with that and I wish you'd stay in touch with me because as Ken said, he can get you some, I probably can't do as much as Calhoun Cares does, but, uh, we probably can get you some help. Uh, you know, get you some help there with these students because I don't want to leave the lawyer, you know, twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars don't sound like much to some of us and that's a plenty to some people. So we don't want to leave anybody out there we can, any clue here. Thank you all for what you've been doing. Okay. No more appearances, uh, new business Matt, I guess that's you. Is that Matt?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's me or not. So, um, I guess this is the, uh, the public conversation from the contract we had matter from the last meeting and executive session. Um, talking with, with, uh, Richard and John as well as, um, I spoke to Jeff and I talked to Christian and a few other firefighters, um, since the executive session last time. Really, the, the same thing still exists. Um, the sheriff i- is basically looking at, at this thing giving birth to a whole new entity kind of thing. It is, it's a big undertaking as far as communications, so. Again, the need hasn't changed. We've got an exorbitant amount of money that, that the county has put forward annually into Motorola. A lot of that comes from the nine one one center and it's for public safety communications. Um, the best force forward according to Motorola and, you know, everybody concerned is to consolidate in some way, shape, or form that radio effort. Um, just like Jeff was saying, there are the pub- public comments. Everybody's concerned about representation in this thing, but, but the reality is, I agree. We, we, as, as the sheriff's office, need radios right now. Uh, I know there's fire, firefighters that need radios. But that kind of also goes to what I was talking about during the executive session. We're, we're, we're finding ourselves at a place where I believe it's March, where the next phase of the narrow banning that started way back in two thousand and ten, um, for the radio frequencies, that last piece is gonna kick in, which is basically your text data. Uh, the radios have to be capable of TV and main. And once that's done, we have, I think, a dozen radios at the sheriff's office that are gonna be antiquated. I know Christian, I, I don't think you guys still have any that you were using, you said, but, but they had a bunch of radios. Those are, eh, eh, a very large cost. And so what I'd like to do publicly is really talk about the, the consolidated effort for public safety communications. I, I think we need to come together as the county, um, and, and put that all under one umbrella because I know, like I said, it, it's easier for us as Calhoun County to go to Motorola and say, we need, you know, two hundred radios or a hundred radios, whatever it is, to cover the needs of the, the basic public safety. Versus me going and saying, I need to come up with, you know, fifty thousand dollars for radio equipment and then Christian and, and Jeff coming five minutes later from the, from the fire service. Because a- again, we, we know from the budgeting standpoint, there's only so many pieces of the pie that we cut before we start running out. So I, I think talking with, um, Richard and John earlier today, I don't think that we're gonna put anything to a vote yet. Um, the vision, the vision that I was talking with them about is I think moving forward with more explore toward stuff on the consolidation piece. Getting together with the different groups that are all concerned so that we're all on the same page, there's no questions. Because I know there's a lot of questions out there, especially on the fireside right now, because there's just so many of them out there. But get us all on the same page a- as far as what it is. Again, the, the need hasn't changed. Motorola is still concerned about the security of their network. We need to come up with, uh, an emergency, uh, radio plan as far as what happens during natu- nat- natural disasters, hurricane vacuases and all that, because we get prioritized based off our need. Um, we need to come up with what our plan is gonna be there. We need to come up with policies for radio usage and even an ordinance like, like I'd said before, to make sure that we have everything in stone and in law so that we can ship Motorola, we're, we're doing what we need to do to keep that network secure for the state. Um, but at this point, I think talking through, we're, we're planning on hosting some meetings. We'll get some, some draft topics together, but I'm not gonna do anything, I think, we're, we're coming together until we've all sat down and all come to the table and we're all on the same page as far as what's going on. Um, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you guys may have or anybody has at this point on the radio.
So I got, wait, so a question for me on these, on these subcommittee meetings that you're planning on having. Who's gonna lead that, Matt? Um, who's gonna make sure all the parties are at the table?
I will, um, get with Richard and John. We can put something out. Again, I told Christian, I think the day after our last meeting, that, that I, I don't plan on moving forward with anything. And, and I know that John's been handling me for the last six months. I'm not, when are you gonna take him to breed? I, I don't know what it even looks like, because one, when, like I said during the executive session, when Bill Maniket has retired from his position in the U of A, he kind of had everything when it was UHF, VHF. The eight hundred is a whole different beast and it's gotta, it, it's, it's evolving as well technologically. So I, I don't even know if it needs to be me. I know, I, I don't consider myself an expert, but if I'm an expert, I'm an expert from necessity. I've dealt with it since two thousand and thirteen and I, I know a lot of players and technology and stuff. But, but again, like, like Christian's saying, I don't, I don't want to tell Christian that he needs this kind of radio and this is all it's gonna be. I'm, I'm not that guy. I'm not a fireman. I don't know what their needs are specifically. So again, we can, can get together as a, a group with, with John and Richard, get some meetings together. You know, we host them here at the sheriff's office or whatever, but, but we need to do that. And again, I want to be on the same page with everybody moving forward because this, this isn't a power play or power struggle on who's gonna be in charge of something. It's accountability for, for y'all, which we need to be able to come back and say, so we've got this amount of money and we're getting a good return and good security on it for us to be able to say the same thing to Motorola and to try to address everybody's needs kind of lot, so.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Did, did some, did any incident or anything bring this about and if so, what was that? And also, is this gonna save the county money by having it streamlined and how?
Yes, potentially, yes. Um, I talked to Jeff, which again, he's done a lot of work as far as, um, the different stations and the different station requirements, um. Ha, all right, if I go to Motorola right now and say I need radios, they're gonna default to a, a certain radio. I know what that certain radio is because it's kind of their default one, but I also know there's cheaper radios out there. And every time I have talked to them about equipment, new radios, I say, what about the Apex one thousand? What about the Apex two thousand, three thousand? There's lower versions of what everybody's carrying today, four thousand, four five hundreds. And what are the restrictions on those things? And I've, I've gotten the answers on that stuff. Um, if you take, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody in particular, but like a jumper station, it's gonna be confined to a certain area. They're not, jumper station is certainly not gonna respond to Santee. And Jeff has done that legwork on this station needs access to these radio towers and that, that's how you're saving money. But with the radio tower coverage up there, they need a bigger radio, honestly, because there's no eight hundred towers in that airhead. You're hitting Lexington Summit Pass. Every piece of this county and Jeff, you definitely understand what I'm talking about, every, we're all unique because for years we didn't participate with Pally. And so the investment from Motorola and the state was not here. We just got our first, or actually our second tower, but it's our, really our first. The, the first tower we had in San Diego was kind of a, an assist to Lexington County, if that makes sense. But our first tower went up here, is an over a million dollar investment from Motorola based off of the, the accident we took consolidating, going to the new radio system and all that last year, year before last. Um, but yeah, I mean, when we're coming together, we're budgeting stuff, also you look at buying power. When we're, when we are coming together as Calhoun County, going to them saying, we need a hundred radios versus me from the sheriff's office saying, I need a dozen and then Jeff coming saying twenty. You, you have more buying power as one in the, and same thing for grants and, and everything as a whole, if that makes sense. We're going after one versus just, you know, all of us individually going to Motorola and going after grants or going after funding and stuff, so that's how it's sacred to money.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Good.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Um, I think what we're looking at, uh, we definitely looking at, uh, saving some money and not necessarily saving money all the time, but getting better services also. So it's two, two-fold of what we're looking at there. So it may cost us a dime more, but if we can get the services that we're not getting, it may be well worth it. And I think it's good that the groups are talking about it. I think in the last council meeting, that's what we talked about. We wanted everybody to get involved and let's come up with the, the right situation.
And that, that's the plan to move forward. I think we're, we're all gonna get together and come up with a plan. But, yeah, I mean, it's not gonna get any cheaper. Nothing is cheaper than this, so.
Will it be a situation where we might be competing with ourselves with grants if everybody has their own? And then somebody else get the grant because they're a bigger entity?
Grants, penny sales tax, I mean, that's the, penny sales tax is the last time it got us. That was Jeff and Denise had talked and then I came in later and was like, that million dollars really doesn't even touch what we need. And it, and it didn't. I mean, it, it's happened and that's what I'm trying to avoid. At least we're all on the same page for the same common goal. Try to get everything on, you know, but.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green, I'm not holding you guys up. If you need to leave, we find out what y'all have to get in our local discussion if you don't want to. You're welcome.
I just want to catch you now.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms., if you will call me, I could get you in touch with Calhoun County Cares and see if there's anything you can do.
Please do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Nothing else on the new business, John?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have one ordinance, second reading on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Calhoun County Code of Ordinances regarding the unloftedness of excessive noise and nuisance.
But you ready for moving?
Yeah, I'm ready for moving.
Mr. Chairman, I moved it. We give second readings to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Second.
Probably moving second. Any further discussion, comments, we will. We do still have to have a public comment on that and we still, and, um, it'll be open again if somebody wanna.
Yes, sir.
And we'll explain it more better, in more details on, on that last reading.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose the like wide eyes, have it. Okay. Moving right along, we draw me down to you, administrator?
Yes, sir. Uh, just a few things. Um, I'd like to give a few, uh, thank yous ultimately. So the early voting, election day poll workers, all the folks that came together, you know, we, we doubled our effort, actually tripled our effort, uh, in the early, uh, voting, um, locations to try to make it more convenient for people to come out. And that's why we had the three different locations throughout the county. I believe that to be very successful from looking at the numbers, uh, that attended there in those days. But I do want to, to, to do a general, uh, thank you to those poll workers. Also, yesterday was a great day, uh, Veterans Day Parade and Program. Uh, we had roughly between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty participants come out, uh, for the program. Uh, had a, had a, a good number of folks, uh, to get up and speak and, and we had a, a real good speaker there. So I want to thank, uh, everybody, not just the committee, uh, but Public Works for coming in and working on their holiday. Um, a, a number of folks that contributed toward that as well as Mr. Robin Rucker, who coordinated the effort, um, our Veterans Day Coordinator. Um, and then, uh, next to last here, I wanted to give a little update and thank Tammy and all the staff that helped her with the delinquent tax sale, uh, that we had. Uh, we had roughly a hundred and thirty-six properties that went to sale. And the total bid amount collected from those a hundred and thirty-six properties was right at six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, okay? Six hundred and forty-six thousand on a hundred and thirty-six properties. So thank you, uh, Tammy and, and staff for pulling all that together. Uh, and then last thing, um, I see Dr. Mulder's. Uh, and then last thing, um, I see Dr. Mulder's in in attendance there. Anything, Doc, you want to shed some light on, or we good?
Yeah, that will, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Doc.
Yep.
So, hey, Sean, he's good. You're the chair.
Yeah, that's right.
We didn't, we didn't, I was gonna call, but we didn't want you to travel all the way from Aigun without nothing to say you gotta travel back.
But make it, but make it quick.
I always enjoy your questions.
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, real quick, I want to thank you all who attended the strategic planning focus group meetings that we had last month. Chairman Hagler, Councilman Carson, which was there as well, um, this Thursday, we're happy to.
Thank you. People online are, people online are happy now.
Should I repeat?
Nope, you get it. Go ahead.
Um, so I'll let you all know, our Housing Consortium meeting is this Thursday at ten AM at the Clemson Rec in Blackville. That'll be followed up by our Executive Committee. Um, eleven-thirty is lunch. The meeting is thereafter. And on November twenty-first, we have our our Aging Committee meeting um at two o'clock on, it's gonna be the following Thursday. And uh, Michelle is a member of that and attends those meetings. Um, and that's all I have for you all. Uh, and um, yeah, it was quite an interesting drive over here. I look at the shorter route going through Swan City next time. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Kevin, Kevin.
I guess on behalf of the veterans, I'd like to thank the people that put that on yesterday, um, since I was one of the honorees, I guess. Um, it is good to see people who do appreciate what we, what we did, uh, have done. Um, and I would like to ask, uh, for maybe, and I don't want to, I I'd like to have a financial accounting for what this actually costs the county at some point, if we could, kind of a ballpark figure for sure, so that we can see if there's any way, I mean, I'm sure there was a good bit of expense to that. Okay? Not that I want to downplay the veterans, but if there's something in there that we can do without, that's costing us a bunch of money. We, we need to look it up.
Okay.
Okay, any other, any other councilman, anything?
No.
Okay, you don't have an executive session tonight, so, uh, worship for a German. Anybody, you didn't, I thought I heard you say something. Okay, worship for a German, if nobody have anything.
Some move.
Second.
Probably move in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank everyone for coming.